Need the whole. We'll call.
Commissioner Capigrosa?
Here.
Commissioner Livermore?
Here.
Commissioner Nettle?
Here.
Commissioner Rondo?
Here.
Commissioner Seabird?
Here.
Resolutions, you started off thinking? That's why we believe in seeing the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, living in this world. Yeah, a little bit of people here today is going to read public comment, if you can keep it under two minutes, we'd greatly appreciate it.
I'll go first.
Cory?
Yes, I'm Cory Cerly. I am here on behalf of the Munising Visitors Bureau. The Munising Visitors Bureau represents the hotels and motels in the tourism industry in the munising area. I'm here today to, as I'm sure a lot of people are, to discuss Trail 422. I just want to make a general statement that we are very concerned and disheartened at the thought of losing this trail. It is probably the number one tourist attraction in the Upper Peninsula, if not the whole state of Michigan. And I'm also concerned that people are going to continue to go down there. I'm concerned about the safety aspect of it. You know, this previous winter, I would say, anyone who lives in this town became very aware of the economic impact of snowmobilers in specific, because that is over ninety percent of our winter business to this area. I can tell you assessments alone, and this is all public knowledge, when we extrapolated out, we lost one point eight million dollars in hotel room sales. That's not cabin rentals. That's not VRBOs. That does not count food. That does not count drink. That doesn't count gas. It doesn't count trail stickers. It doesn't count snowmobile rentals. It is hotel room sales alone. They say that less than ten percent of a visitor's budget is spent on their lodging. So if you look at that, you're talking tens of millions of dollars that did not come into our economy with the lack of snowmobilers this winter. And closing Trail 422 will not necessarily keep snowmobilers from coming here, but I can tell you, I'm in all the online forums, and the number one thing that people seem to be saying is, well, we won't go to munising and we're going to show them. And it's like, but we are here advocating for you, and this is what we don't want to happen, and please do not punish the businesses if this does happen. So, and I've been dealing with this off and on, when this happened again in, I think it was two thousand and ten, eleven, many years ago, the trail was closed. It was a nightmare then. So I'm really hoping that we can avoid this and we can all work together. I don't want to place blame. I, you know, I just want to get it fixed, because at the end of the day, the only people that this hurts are the local business people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go on twice. Three times.
I'll say something. My name is Karen. I am a local. I am a board member of Elder County Sorba. I am a lifetime member of my Sorba, and I am also a member of Elder County, or I'm sorry, American Council of Snowmobile Associations, which is the national organization. As a snowmobiler, I think it is a huge mistake to close that trail. Several snowmobilers come up for that trail alone. And I'm just saying it would be a huge mistake, not only for the economic impact, but for snowmobilers alone.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Paul.
Hi, um, the problem with anyone right now. Mom, I live in Schoolcraft. I have my friends come up to snowmobile, and one of our destinations is I take them up to Victor Rock. If that trail goes away, we won't be coming up that way. We'll be heading up to Paradise. Thank you, that, because it's kind of Victor Rock is gorgeous. We'll go down from the pool, because once you get up here, there's really no other destination to take to make them go well. So, and I know a lot of people that are all going up riding. So you'll not only get my destination, but you'll miss everybody. But I know I know we ride all come up here. And I know this year with riding and without the snow, munising is devastated, just like Manistee. I don't want to see town struggle that much. I really need to keep traveling. For us citizens.
Anybody else?
I have to agree. I'm Hank Armbruck, I live over at Monarchat. I have to agree with the ladies that I run personal tours throughout the UP snowmobiling. I have people that come up from Florida. I have people coming over from Canada. I have people coming from Pennsylvania, from Illinois, that all come up, and one of the things they want to see is Miners Castle. So again, closing that trail eliminates those people enjoying the severy route here.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, we'll close public comment. Any changes to the agenda they want? And we're good. Don't speak to me. Consent? Consent on that minutes? Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
I'm sure he's just not.
I said it's on that. Number seven. Trail 422 discussion. We have the DNR here to give us a brief update on that. Everybody can pull their two bits on that. So let's hear them all.
So actually, I'd like to invite John and David also up, if they would like to. We just had a kind of a pre-meeting before this, and this story is kind of involves all of us. I don't know, anybody from the road commission or feel free to interject. You guys gonna stay there? You tell me what I'm, feel free to, can you see it okay? I know it says an IDO here. Um, so we'll start with introductions on Stacy Boy, and they can field up if you put the DNR.
PJ Costa, Trail Specialist for these three. Dave Horn, Super Ten at Victor Rock, rocks that.
And I'm Ron Yesny, I'm the Trail Coordinator for the Upper Peninsula DNR.
And feel free, our friends with the road commission, if there's something that you guys want to say or interject, you know, let us know. But we wanted to give a brief kind of overview. So our team's going to kind of do that. Ron, if you want to.
Yeah, so there's a couple of issues with H58. There's two issues. We're trying to, the road commission did come to us in two thousand and twelve, and they asked us to move the trail, and we've tried. So I'll get into that. But right now, the issue is that we haven't been able to find a really valid reroute, and that's due to a conservation easement that lies on the land around the Myers River, and it also has to do with private land ownership that we can't get permission for. So at this time, we've explored it, I've went into it, but there are no viable reroutes. Elder County Road Commission has asked us, they said, as of this fall, we won't be issuing a permit to the snowmobile program. So they wouldn't be able to groom that segment, and that segment of trail would essentially be disconnected, because you wouldn't be able to get from one end to the other. So that would essentially close 422. So we've worked to try to find a way around it, because there's this point eight miles of trail they asked of roadway, excuse me, that uses H58. And the road commission has a lot of concerns with that, because it's point eight miles, but it's narrow there, and there's guard rail, and they try to keep it snow-free, and there's logging trucks, and they have a lot of concerns about safety, and they have concerns about road damage. We've been notified by them. We've done everything we could at this point to find a way around it. And at this point, we don't have a reroute. We went up the, up the chain of command with Attorney General. We've tried to do everything. We've contacted the corporate headquarters of Manual Life Corporation. They're unwilling to work with us in any way. So there is not any feasible reroutes.
I want to just confirm though, Manual Life has been a great partner. We're working with them, but at this time, there isn't a desire to to coexist, or we can't get an easement through that land. We don't have land ownership there. So there's a conservation easement that doesn't allow us to add a structure. So it's not that they're not willing, it's just that that's not their desire to move forward, to reroute. Even if we had a reroute, there would be a lot more issues at hand, correct? So we still would have to add bridges, you know, get permits and other things. So it's not, you know.
Yeah, I can summarize it this way. I've been in the trails, I've been with the DNR for over twenty years, as a trail specialist, as a trail coordinator. Before that, I did eight other years with the federal government doing trails work. Rarely, but in some cases, you run into scenarios where there is not an option to reroute a trail. And sometimes there's just, I worked really hard, a lot of success finding alternate routes, being able to move it to another road, or find another permission from another landowner. We, we, we make reroutes all the time. There's just a situation here where we don't have any viable reroute, so we would do it. Yeah, so this, this goes back to, you know, two thousand fifteen, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and Cory's organization pumped in some money to the road commission to help fit some of the holes on that road and things like that. And we had some public meetings, and we were hoping by now we would have a feasible reroute to get this trail out of the road commission's hair, and to find a better way to get people to Miners Castle, because Miners Castle, as you've heard from others, is a major destination for snowmobilers. And people come and stay in munising, because they want to go to Miners Castle. I've been up there on my snowmobile on the weekends. There's a lot of snowmobilers that go to Miners Castle. Attempted reroutes, it's just some maps. You run into some situations, everything in blue, everything in orange is private land. We don't have permission there. Everything in blue is protected by a conservation easement. Everything in yellow is private without any opportunities to cross it, and it's full of wetlands. The conservation easement won't allow us to put any structures on the conservation easement. A bridge is considered a structure. I don't think it belongs to. So these are some other possibilities. We thought maybe we could use the old trail, the current trail, and then run along here. It's all wetland. We tried to do it. Manual Life was definitely against that option, because that cuts all this off from the roadway. This is how we, I already explained the conservation easement, but everything in blue is the conservation easement, and that's protected. So basically what that was in two thousand and eight, state purchased conservation easement on this land preserves it in perpetuity. What it preserves is what was there in two thousand and eight. So the trail that goes up and uses H58 is great. We can use it forever. Unfortunately, we have to use H58, and that's the problem. We've done extensive reroutes. We've talked to Attorney General, met with numerous landowners. We've met with the Park Service, kind of to get their concerns, you know. One of our thoughts was, the Park Service was, hey, this is a Park Service issue, because we draw a lot of people here. A lot of people are going to Miners Castle, and they said, yes, we've done a lot of work to make sure that that road and that property was open to snowmobilers, because they knew it was a popular destination. Maybe you can explain that, David. There's something that's federal registry. I think that's had to do to keep that open to snowmobiling.
Yeah, that was a change in the federal regulations. We had certain just pieces of road that came in and out of the park that weren't included. And that regulation, so we added all of us, literally every road in the park that we don't plow is, or can be part of an official, some. And that was per Sorba's request, I think, several years ago, or something. I can't remember. But anyway, in our concern, this is like, this is like any other trail, even a foot trail. If you cut off the access to it, I didn't visit it, it's still going to go there. So our concern is just that there's a piece which can be off-traveling use specific, that kind of thing, unmanaged usage, because it won't be signed, it won't be groomed.
Yeah, so we, we met with Park Service, and they have some concerns about it being closed, because like David said, you know, there's still going to be people trying to get there, and which could turn into a bigger problem. We did come to the Elder Board County Board about a year ago, explaining that this might happen, because we were running into roadblocks. We had some options at that time that we were exploring. But many of you were here and heard us share some maps at that time and say that it was very possible that we were going to run into this impasse. It didn't, we still were exploring some options at that time, but it didn't work out.
And I think, you know, what came from our last meeting too, is we're going to continue to, we're not giving up. We're going to continue to to explore every opportunity. The issue is, we're out of time now, right?
Out of time, and the options are very, very limited. We don't have the power within the department to change that conservation easement, or to change manual life position on the matter.
But on property control.
This is that slide on the this is like correspondence with the Park Service, but I already summarized it. In summary, you know, closure of the trail is going to result in unauthorized use. We'd rather see it managed, maintained. We were really hoping to find a way to make it work. We were hoping, and we met today with the road commission, they had a lot of safety concerns. We're hoping to coexist on the roadway. But they can speak to that. It doesn't sound like that's a real good option. There's the way that road narrows up, the way they have logging trucks and groomers, and they've had a lot of concerns there. And because we haven't been able to find a reroute, you know, they're going to want it back closed. So this closure will also other, impact other recreationalists, because it's groomed and maintained by a snowmobile community. A lot of hikers go up there, a lot of house scavengers go up there. There's a lot of ice climbing competitions out there, and they all use the groomed snowmobile trail to go in and out of there. So if we're not grooming it, it's going to impact them. And it'll impact first responders, because they'll have a really rough way in and out of there. It won't be groomed and maintained like it has been. So we've exhausted all options. You know, it all comes down to that point eight miles of road. It's really an impasse. You know, we understand the road commission's concerns. We just don't have any way to get around it. Stacy said it earlier, you know, we'll continue to seek every possible alternative, but we've run this up as high as we can go and run into run into impasses. So that's kind of where we're at. Did I miss anything, PJ or Stacy?
I think there's a few more.
Oh, summary.
We might have handed out the letters.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just our final letters back and forth. Road commission's been, you know, clear with us, and, you know, just nowhere to go at this point.
Yeah, these are the letters, but I handed out some hard copies of those, and I think the question, maybe, you know, we have this in the pre-meeting. You know, if there's something that hasn't been explored, if there's some other option that we haven't thought of, it's not that we're not open to it, but we're, as of December first, we won't have a licensed trail. So therefore, that would be, you know, signed, and and obviously, we wanted to make sure you guys were aware, just as we did a year ago, and we came saying this could be a possibility, but, you know, we wanted to make sure everybody knew, especially the Park Service and.
And then one thing we did do last, last fall, I think it was in November or October, is we, we offered to harden the road or pay for the additional cost to harden the road surface, which is a hardened asphalt, which is usually thirty to forty percent more than regular asphalt. Asphalt, we don't normally want to do that, because it opens up a huge can of worms. If we had to do that in every situation, on every road that we shared, it would break the program. So there's about six to seven million dollars that we get in revenue every year to spend. And that includes reimbursing our groomers, buying new groomers, our signing and maintenance fees. So it's not a, snowmobile program is not a, not a cash cow. We're down to about half as many trail permits as we had in two thousand and five. Once the reception hit in two thousand and eight, a lot of people, our trail permits dipped. Interestingly enough, though, although it also has a lot to do with the climate in lower Michigan, so we're not selling as many trail permits, because they're not getting snow in lower Michigan. And they used to sell a lot of trail permits down there. So although our trail permits are a lot less than they were fifteen years ago, our trail counts in the UP are just as high or higher. And the reason for that is, a lot of times, we're the only place that has any snow. So we keep getting the traffic, but we don't have as much money to spend in the program. So our, our budget's gone down. So I hope I've explained it, and I hope that you guys can, you understand, you know, the departments try to find solutions and trying to work this out. And just right now, I don't see any way of of working through it, because the road commission is very concerned about safety there, and safety is an issue. So we have to consider that. So without permit from them, trail's going to close, and how's that affect the community? It could affect the community in a lot ways. So that's why we're here. I don't know. I think they're, I don't think a lot of take questions or anything. Just, we're here to present, and then there's a public comment later. That's correct.
Good question. So as told earlier. And that's my concerns. I mean, we are the destination. That's not boss on us. So we want to do whatever we can to work with you and road commission, and to keep this going. I know a lot's at stake, but businesses and visitation, visitor experience, anything else. So we're here to do what we can, in a sense also.
Yeah, you know, there's people that comes and you visit, Miners Castle, first time, they come back in the summer, vice versa. That's what we have. And I believe in talking to you guys, you'll take a comment at the end. Is that what you want to do?
I'll take a comment at the end.
Okay. So that's our presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Rebecca, you're up.
I'm here to present the FY twenty-five County Veteran Service Fund grant. So this would run October one of two thousand and twenty-four through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, and so the base amount is fifty thousand dollars because of our per capita veteran population, which exceeds ten percent here in Elder County. The total grant is fifty-eight thousand and ninety dollars. So we're not changing a whole lot. Going to do the Veteran of the Year banquet, spend eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars of it on public relations. That's supporting the All Vets golf scramble, the Veteran of the Year, and event swag. Second is advertising, marketing, five thousand three hundred and sixty-five with that. Part of that goes to the Altrian advertising fee. I'm certain everybody's seen the Altrian with the Elder County wrap on it. It's really a great rolling billboard for our office and doing direct mailings, and that's where we advertise the Veteran of the Year banquet. It still amazes me. I've been doing this for five years, and a lot of people still every month have not heard of this office and roll in for the first time. So continuing education. This year, I attended virtual. Next year, I'll attend in person, and that's sort of the new future plan is attending national conference every year in person, since they've changed the rules on that. Before, it was I had to attend in person every year. It's a huge expense. This year was in Denver, Colorado, just trying to save some money on that one. So the Veteran voucher program allows us to assist veterans who are in need with dental vouchers for cleaning, snow removal, which we didn't use one this year. And then continuing to pay for my salary. So that is right now, the county continues to pay twenty hours a week of my salary. The grant covers the additional hours each week with benefits. So nothing really new there. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, you're going to give some thank you from us. I hear nothing but good things. Has that grant been going up every year? Where did it start?
It starts at fifty thousand. So last year's, or FY twenty-four, was fifty-four thousand, because of our veteran population continues to increase a little bit here in Elder County. This upcoming year will be fifty-eight thousand. So, and those numbers can be a little off, because the VA releases, like the VA just released twenty-twenty-three's veteran population in two thousand and twenty-four. So it's always honestly a year behind. So.
I'll just tack on that. I just recently was talking to somebody, and they told me you just need to get ahold of the guy up in Ishraming, who's the advocate, da-da-da. And I said, oh, you don't know Rebecca then? So somebody was telling me to go see somebody in Ishraming about something that was needed in the county. And I said, oh, no, we have our own.
Yeah, and so, as much as we do word of mouth, you know, honestly, is still the best advertisement for the office. So thanks for quoting Rebecca. Yeah.
We have somebody here, you know. So appreciate everything you do.
Yeah.
Same here.
Good.
Thank you. Number nine, this is my wage catch-up discussion. I think, has everybody read that? That's all, both?
I got lost in the background.
How are you guys today?
How are you?
In the eye and tell us the bad news. Black and white.
What we have is when she gave us our first want to say a bit, the numbers that she was using were not correct numbers. Since then, she has got the correct numbers that include.
So may I speak? Okay, so the reporting system that we use in order to come up with the per parcel count that was basing the information on had changed with the BSNA software, where they no longer put the tally in for tax-exempt parcels, special acts, which would be DNR, commercial forest reserve, anything that wouldn't be considered a normal ad valorem taxation, where it's being valued by the assessor based on value, that they would be part of a special act where they're being taxed at a different mechanism, whether it's so much per acre, like the commercial forest, or if they are part of the DNR where the state determines the value. So when I was putting together the numbers, I made a clerical mistake, because I didn't realize the BSNA system no longer included those parcel counts in the overall total. So when this was when I was looking at redoing the invoices for the next year on my contract where the rate had changed, that's where I had picked up on the fact that it wasn't including the other parcel counts as part of the total parcels that are active in Elder County. So I had amended my invoice and had submitted it to accounts payable. And then the discussion had come up by the commissioners, that it was a lot different number than what they were expecting. And so I was just clarifying. So part of the committee meeting with the finance and audit was showing that it was truly a clerical error, that if you looked historically on the old system that we had, which was Manitron, that where I was coming in with my parcel counts was supported based on history. So I was just looking for clarification, figuring out what we needed to do going forward. And that's just that where the meetings had went and where we're coming to.
The question is, there's a clerical error. As a board, we've got to decide where we want to go for on here. It's clerical error on her end. Does that mean the county should pay for that error? Or should we, you know, we made our decision on numbers that were given to us by her. Now it's going to be different. What's the difference in costs? It's going to be right around six thousand dollars more. As a board, what do we want to do? I do not believe that the county should be responsible for an error that wasn't ours, is even what was it hers? The contract does read, or parcel. But when we were given that contract, those numbers, make our decision on, were wrong.
So the information, just to clarify too, we're talking about what I get paid in other counties. Schoolcraft County is almost identical for parcel count, including the special acts, the tax exempts, all of that additional information, and I make fifty-one thousand five hundred there. Just to give you an idea. Because that is pretty much the, and I understand, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but for me, facts don't have feelings. A parcel is a parcel. And, you know, I'm just basing it off of that.
And that's where I'm sitting is, same way, facts don't have feelings. We didn't make a mistake, mistake was made by you.
And you didn't verify it either, as a commission.
Right.
Okay.
Right, that was, we, we got our information through somebody we thought was credible, and so did you.
Well, I'd be careful, this is a public meeting, are you insinuating I'm not credible?
You're just assuring me that I didn't do my job.
No, I said as a commission, I was just saying, I just wanted to clarify.
We thought that we had credible information. And that's what we did our, did our discussion on and what we made our vote on. Now we found out after that, now that information was wrong. Now, does the taxpayer pay for it? And I don't know where that lies. Should we look at council to look at it, tell us what to do? Or do we just pay the bill? Or do we discuss and try to renegotiate to a?
Or identify what you guys would consider for parcel or whatever would.
Renegotiate, put that stuff to the board to discuss what we want to do on it.
I think it was an honest mistake. I don't think of anybody, you know, intent was to give incorrect information.
No, she got her information through somewhere she thought was right.
And where, where did our number end up for total for this year?
It's for this year, so the parcel count is thirteen thousand eighty-eight, and what I had been relying on. The form is called a forty twenty-two is what tells us the parcel count, and that came in at eleven thousand two sixty-nine. So the difference truly was your tax exempts, which would be state, federal, anything that would have a deed that could be conveyed. Would be considered an act of parcel on our end, so that, that's where the difference is. So if you take tax exempts, which is right around. I don't have the exact number, but like, let's say just shy of twelve hundred, and then you have. Six hundred and some, that would be part of the Commercial Forest program, and then there are eighty-eight or eighty-nine that are part of the DNR parcel list. That are part of the payment and little taxes.
I guess I was looking more for like the bottom line.
Oh, the bottom line.
What are we paying you for the year?
Yeah, so.
No, no, I understand that, I'm looking for the.
That was like around forty-nine thousand for the year, roughly, but if, if all the parcels counted with how the, the pricing increase. Took place.
That, that's what I'm looking for, is the comparison number two. What I'm trying to work out my head is if, then we're using, we're using Schoolcraft as kind of an analog.
Yeah.
Just over fifty-one, you said there. If you're at forty-nine now, we give you six, now we're over.
No, previously, that's with, that's with everything, that's with everything. So previously, it would have been, and I don't have my phone or a calculator on me, you took like, yeah. So if you took the eleven thousand two sixty-nine times the three dollars and seventy-five cents a parcel, it was gonna come out, I wanna say forty-three, was that about right? Cause that's the six thousand difference, so you guys would have been budgeting for around forty-three. And with then correcting the parcel count, it put me like around forty-nine. Going for twenty twenty-four, it was three seventy-five, three dollars and seventy-five cents a parcel. Yeah, so the difference was about six thousand. Yeah, and that was the price difference between adding the additional quarter, but then also adding the additional parcels based on the parcel phone.
Alls I can tell you in my, in my opinion, uh, I was here when we had the last equalization. Person, it was a nightmare, and this has been straightened up. And I would suggest that we straighten it up with their.
And that's, that's kind of where I was getting to, I think, is, you know, like I said, I believe it was just an honest mistake. You know, new system, learning, you know.
And to be a good steward, I won't even worry about twenty twenty-three, cause I truly enjoy working in this county and working with everybody. If we could just start fresh. Not looking at the personal mistake for twenty twenty-three, starting fresh with where we're at for twenty twenty-four. I, I wouldn't toy both over that mistake. I'll, I'll eat that. That was my mistake. I'm talking going forward. I have no issues with that.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Everybody gets hurt, everybody hurts a little bit.
I would say the consensus is that.
So correct the June, cause we talked about that, and then just.
Yeah, yes.
Then may I just recommend, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. I, I have no problems with that, as long as we keep the open lines of communication. I have no issues with that. Just I would recommend, you know, as we talked, when we get closer to when you're putting together, I can. Reach out to assessors, is there anything we need to know about? Were there any weird splits? So then we'll have a pretty decent idea on parcel count, so you're not caught in this situation, nor. You know, we're not having this conversation again, it's, I think we'll be good, because, you know.
I think the board expects a, well, we're hoping for a growth, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
When we see that bigger growth, it's like a red flag.
Sure.
So.
And trust me, when I said that too, I was like, what is going on? And that's where I started digging and found. That the reporting software does not report it the same way, and I'll be honest, I did not realize it. Talked with Steph here at the department, she didn't realize it, and that's why we started digging, it was like, okay, what happened here? And that's what I'm saying, it just. Computers are as good as the idiot using them, I guess.
So consensus on from, moving on from here on forward?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
We haven't had any state letters in a while.
Correct.
In the last board, we had numerous state letters.
We had a doing a good job.
Thanks, well, we, we've got it to, to a point now where I, I'm reviewing my work as well, so I know what's been done and what hasn't been done. And that can take up to three to five years, and we're just finished the five years, and I feel really good about where we're at. Plus we cleaned up a lot of policies and procedures, cause I can't stand duplication of effort. So I like to just make sure that we're going forward, and we have market data now, and. It's a blessing and a curse, you know, but it, it's good for what we have to do for our county.
Do you want to just add the difference on the July?
Yeah, just carry it like, forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the job you do.
And number ten, we have friends who are court refereeing cost sharing. What we had in the past for friends in the court, we share a friend with Blue Smack and I, Elton School Craft. Cost sharing is coming up again. And there's different options, do we want to do it straight out? Twenty-five percent, do we want to do it by population? Do we want to do it by workload? I'm thinking workload, that's you pay to play, the person I use the most pays the most, but that's up to. I believe workload, which actually, we do, we would do well on that, Elton County. But this does have to go, go into all four counties, they're, they're looking at, um, what we all suggest. I'm sure the ones that are in the highest want to.
Where is his base from?
He is based out of Blue's County, I believe.
The new referee?
Yeah, but he doesn't, and that's the next one on, oh, okay, sorry. It's all part of it, it's, um, his mileage, you know, it's like, well, they were saying, you know, please come to Munising Music. Mileage, I just told them, I said, well, how about we have here? And everybody pay mileage, I'd be happy to have him here, it's a good paying job, that brings good paying job in Munising, and they kind of just. But that, that was the end of it, so.
Yeah. I would think by workload would be.
That, that's the only metric you really have to.
So, but they did do different ways here, three different ways they can look at. Um, I do got a Zoom meeting with them next week, I believe. Maybe it's just their take, if I don't know me.
Yeah, unless you find a drastic change, I would. As well, this would be the way to go in my opinion, because that's just the most fair.
What's his contract on? Is it one, three, how many years is he in?
Three years.
Three years, you know, if the numbers change drastically in three years.
Well, I think that's what it is. Right now, it's coming back up, and that's why he also bring in, the biggest person did not charge mileage at all.
Right.
And this one kind of got in there, it's like, what do you mean there's no mileage? He didn't know that, so he's been running out. Yeah, so, and they're wondering how to get that in there. For him to keep track of his mileage and have to cut another check every week. The idea came just to raise his wage and put it in his thing, that's it. That way, I mean, every week we have to cut separate checks and stuff like that, so. Yeah, everybody was happy with that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a wage confusing to be trying to.
Yeah.
And like you said, it's not fair, really. It's that Newberry's not gonna pay any mileage cause he lives there.
Right, but that's what I said, it's going in.
Yeah, if we put it into a salary, it spreads the cost.
So, smart move, consensus on. He's always base or? I, I'm good with that, you know, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, number eleven. Authorized Music Marketplace Advisory Committee. Just all theme of all. Trying to get the right people in the right room, kind of like we did to it within our, we've got a lot of things to talk with the Music Marketplace. That does involve the people that are actually, need to be there to make the decisions. We'd like to make advisory committee that has all the right people in it, with the city. The EVA, Renor Board, County Land Bank. And that would be an advisory committee only, not an authority. But they would, that way, that keeps everybody informed of what is actually going on.
And try to get. A lot of people that are involved in it and trying to have them go to each meeting. It would just make it a lot smoother and easier for everybody to be in one place at one time to make those decisions.
Well, we need to find out too, is if we're going forward with this, or where it's at. Right, and know the, there's so many hearsays out there, this way, everybody will be informed.
Well, it's easier to put the right people in, put all the people in one room, and they talk about it, just like we learned with the, you know, bringing back the regional government meetings. It's a lot easier, we can sit down in one room instead of bits and pieces. We all played that game in kindergarten, the message changed by the end.
Did I miss anybody on that, Pam? Who would want on that?
Did you mention the State Land Bank? County Land Bank and the Brownfield.
Yeah.
Devin will be on that from the city.
Yeah, but Devin said he'd be on there.
Kathy Melons from the.
No, she'd be.
Is this spelled up the player?
It's held it up a little bit, but I just got bids in, we're gonna start, um, actually Wednesday, we're gonna choose a contractor. And we're going forward with the stabilization, so that should be starting soon.
Okay. It's just the marketplace, right?
Yep.
Right.
Consensus?
We're twelve, approved, airport use policy grounds.
The paper ones I handed you were correct, like I said in the email, I sent my late night copy where I started working on the next step. To Joel instead of the one that I should have sent you, so, uh, we're, we're not concerned, not looking for, uh. We're still trying to work on the big, basic details of selling leasing lots, so.
I read everything, number seven, it's like, that's the only thing I had a problem with, so.
Cause it's not on there, ignore, ignore number seven, like it doesn't exist. Yeah, the rest of it, really the only thing that's changed is we've taken Pilot Park. Out of the camping section, and calling it more of actually what it really is, cause we're not. The place back there in that corner for them to stay in the woods, it's not a camper. Literally, there's no marked sites, there's no, you know, there's trails, there's flat spots in the wood, they go in. They, they want to stay there instead of under their wing, all the middle of the big hot field. You know, a lot of the bugs aren't too bad, and that's your own problem, no, bring your own bug though. So, basically what it did, it's just removed all that verbiage, and the township was much happier with this version. And I go before them on Wednesday for the conditional use permit, so we can get this finished. And so, this would like it to be, you know, official, yes, this is, this is the language we're gonna go with. I know previously I asked you, is when we approved camping language under number three. So, we just adjusted some of the language and separated those two things, camping and the pilot park.
Would you feel comfortable guys to put this at a, cause we don't have the whole thing? To put it as a line item for next week?
Next week, yeah.
And then, instead of putting it on the consent?
Yeah. I, I do have a couple of questions in. You've got, uh, must, to supply for permit, are we charging for a permit?
For which one? Com- commercial use or special use?
It says still must be applied for a permit.
We don't, we don't know because we haven't, anybody asked for one yet, so.
What would it set before you?
No, because we don't know what kind of commercial use we're talking. Are we talking somebody that's gonna run a flight school? Or somebody that's gonna do air tours, or somebody that's gonna put in a mechanic shop? Or is gonna set up a fuel shop? So really, it's something, we'll have to approve it as a board. But it's really something that we have to, we have to take at least at first on a case by case basis. Because I can't say that, okay, if Dean wants to open up a AMP mechanic shop up there, that, okay, we're gonna charge you. Hundred and fifty dollars a month, Kelly wants to run air tours, well, you know, that might not be. The right answer there, that one, it might be a better deal to do, you know, a percentage of, you know, each tour is, you know, yeah. Until we know who wants, right, until we know who wants to use it, I don't think we can, I don't want to set a price and either price ourselves out or cheat ourselves.
Are you, are you advertising these permits, or are you, you know what I mean, are you, once we have them available?
We don't have, we don't even have a spot available yet, so.
Yeah, we can discuss that further.
But that will be a board decision nowadays.
Any other questions I can try and answer?
And do you send to put that as a line item next week?
Yes.
We deal with number four right now, just so I can tell that, just that language change. That way, when I go to the township on Monday, I can tell them it's been approved.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, the only problem I had was the number seven, that.
And, and number seven isn't coming up for next week, number seven might not be ready until this fall.
Well, then we can put it on consent. Omitting number seven. Well, I'd like to have a little more clarification for number one.
On which one? Okay, what can I try and answer for you?
It was the permit part.
The permit part.
Until we have somebody come to us that wants to go run a commercial operation, we'd have no idea what to.
Do you have any idea what other airports of our size do?
We will when we, cause right now you've got, oh. Well, let's see, here's the problem, the AMP shop in Manastee closed, it's for sale, it's hangar and shop. The nearest one right now is in Monomie. I only know that cause Dick Bowerman's gotta get his plane back from Monomie, is that what's closest place he could have it worked on? We've got. Someone with some qualifications that may be looking for space. More information on that to come on, until we know what, somebody wants to put there, we don't know what to charge them or how to charge them, really. And right now, we don't even have the space to charge them.
At this point, it's pretty much a new for commercial operation there. I think they're more looking at just giving it up and running, but have verbiage in there for commercial.
You just want that to be presented to the township, right? Is that what you're?
Number four specifically, number three and four, cause that's, that's the conditional use permit that I'm going in front of.
But if you do go farther down, it says permit conditions will be determined on a case by case basis, so it's not just. It does say that it will be case by case.
My question is, I want, I want to know what you're gonna be charging.
I don't know, you, you come, you come to the business proposal, we'll sit down, we'll come up. You, me, the committee, Kelly will come up with a thing and we'll bring it to the board, here's our renovation. She's there.
I'm there.
So, what would you like to see out of that, Mike?
I don't care if we wait on all the rest of it until. Number seven, that I can bring something to you, I need number three and four, is what I really would like to have settled. And I don't really think anything's changed other than the verbiage there.
I'm okay with everything except, like you said, number seven, which is not.
Which I accidentally included, apologized for it. Cause yeah, that's a. Lot of work in progress still up there, yeah.
And with one, I agree with Mike that we don't know. We don't know what's going up there yet for, if there is anything up there, it might be ten years, it might, it might have to take more than. I do believe it should be airport related on.
And that, that will be one thing that does make it into the, it has, well, it has to be aviation. Because if we ever take, right now we're at that basic utility level, but that lowest round, any step up. Which for many, many, many years, we were on that next step, on that general utility. Then mandatory, it has to be aviation related.
Yeah, I don't think we ever wanna get to that point, cause it's a lot more headaches.
Well, we don't have a million dollars, but lights and so. And that's also a requirement for the next step. The runway has to be lit from dust to lawn.
So you want, uh, to pass two, three and four? So you can go to the township.
I can three. If I do wanna pass it, if we can just pass three and four, we can keep working on the rest.
I'll agree with that.
You need a motion, Daniel.
Want to vote on three and four, so you, cause you got a meeting next week.
Uh, on this Wednesday.
Before our next week meeting. Alright, a motion? Don't make the motion. We'll call to accept three and four.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Number thirteen, courthouse security committee list. I meant, it's the standard thing from the state. That we put in. We just gotta add Courtney and Magic Gray, Scott. Judge is coming on. Any questions on that? Number fourteen, Aurora Fisher, unfortunately, she is no longer with us. For work, that is.
Thank you.
Union fails, two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight sixty-eight.
These are all what are specified in contracts.
Yep, all contracts. Hopefully, we were hoping she could do part-time, but it's, it's cutting all ties, so. What's the best word?
Yep, yep.
Get the lady paid, consensus? Number fifteen, custodian, curated, plead disposal warrant. Our custodian is not union, she is. But after that, the point is. You get good people and she has no vacation, so never do vacation. So to keep a good person with no vacation makes it that hard.
And no benefits.
Yeah, she will also have benefits, yeah. So, and when she does take sick time or off, we don't fill her position, Ryan just kinda takes it over. There's no effort house to the county, I believe it's, uh, it's wise. To keep good people patterned out for.
My next question was, okay, where do we fall in the table of?
Right, and before that, in the last ten years, how many have we had? So.
See, I've been, I've been here when she's been working, she's.
Um, this does not do anything with con, per union or anything, so she is her own. So she would get, pretty much, and it doesn't go by her, it won't be forty hours, she would get seven percent. Seven percent, cause that's what she is.
Fifty-six.
After one year, she would get twenty-eight hours vacation, two years she get fifty-six, after six years she get eighty-four. After twelve years, a hundred and twelve.
My only question would be, are we awarding them on the anniversary date in bulk? Are we paying them all over time?
I think it should.
I think she should get the time, so.
And once she takes a time off, you'll get the check for that.
Right, but I mean, does she earn the hours? Your two years, on the anniversary date, she gets fifty-six hours. For the year, then on the anniversary date, the next year she gets her fifty-six hours for that.
After two years, she earned.
I'm fine with that, in bulk, you get all your days off, right? And spend them how you choose throughout the year.
Yeah, perfect.
That's why I'm waiting, I just, I didn't know which way we want it to.
Well, we do gotta write it up correctly.
Yep.
On that.
So you're saying on the anniversary, it's awarded, that's what we currently?
Yeah, okay, and that's how, that was just making sure, that's how we were.
Yeah, and then calendar, you start with what you accrue, if you go, you, you've only earned an extra week or whatever you get on your anniversary, so. January one, you accrue. The week or the two weeks, and then once you hit that six year, the next, then get that one week on your anniversary. And then continue to roll over, fold them out, going through. That word, what we're saying?
Stay away, we have everybody else.
And she has her own contract and everything, when you make sure that we have the same language.
I don't want her to get the hours, I just wanna make sure we're.
Yeah.
We're doing it, we need to.
I'll get with Ryan, we'll put the language more definitive and then put it on revoked next week.
I think so, yes.
I don't think there's any consensus on that.
Number sixteen. This is all you mailing system.
Uh, we currently use, have penny bowls. It'll be a five-year extension over about twenty-five, exactly twenty-five dollars a month increase. I did look at USPS, they have smaller units. But I think penny bowls has worked really well for us. Even when there was an issue, the techs came out promptly. Software upgrade, this whole unit is gonna be at a date. Very soon anyway, so.
And no.
Yeah. Yeah, in our committee meeting, we went over it, cause, you know, yeah, there are some other options out there, but they don't like the postal service one. It's a smaller unit, it's not made for the volume of mail that we put through this machine. There's, I think I used the treasurer's office, I walked in one day and. Somebody from the treasurer's office has got like four racks, like boxes full of envelopes running, you know. We run that through a machine, it's not made for it, and all you're gonna do is be waiting for the tech to come all the time to fix the machine, so. I think in the committee, our. Recommendation was to go ahead and go with penny bowls again and, you know, we're gonna get a upgraded new machine out of it, is. This one won't take any more firmware upgrades, so.
Consensus with me?
Yep.
You know. Point technology, wifi upgrades. Who wants to take that?
We talked about it in our committee meetings. Yeah. I gotta point it, like right now, my phone's over, I've got full wifi, until I try and do something. Because everybody else is down here and upstairs still, it's on it, it's overloading. The biggest problem we're gonna run into is we've also got some other technology upgrades that we have to make, that are gonna be even more vital than this. Our air handling system, our servers for that. Our, well, they were probably on their last link four years ago. They've managed to patch them. Brian got locked out of the system again, so he can't, he wasn't able to, there's dampers in all these ductworks, they can direct. How much air, what temperatures goes where, it crashed again. Along with D-Tech's help with honey wells, they were able to find. You know, it was like going downstate through Wisconsin to get there. You know, no guarantee, it might last for a week, it might last for a year. That's gonna require a server upgrade. You know, we were talking, I don't remember what the exact number was.
It's like fifteen for.
Thirty-five thousand from Honeywell themselves, plus fifteen thousand. The new server would be a virtual server, and the gentleman from D-Tech said there'll be actually be about ten spots in that. So we will be able to use that for some other things as well, we have, uh, one of our servers is. Old and full and glitching and is, you know, also in need of replacement, so that two birds wants to, type of thing, but. Yeah, right now the wifi, I mean, we have to wait until we can, we've gotta find. Pam, I know was gonna do some looking to see where possibly we can get the money, but you know. No, not right now probably, because I think we need to, my, me personally, I think we need to make sure we can heat and cool our building.
We can make sure the jury. More so than us having wifi in our race.
So, do we wanna pull off and see if we get more information for another week, or we just wanna? Put it on hold, I don't know, but right now I don't think.
We put on a line item for next week? I do know there are times when that's part of the thing, but I don't think it's.
See if we get some more information or not.
They're hoping to find a different route to build. None of them, uh. Are viable.
Yeah, they're trying hard, folks, they really are, they're doing a lot of work for us.
Uh, consensus to put a line item nationally? Number eighteen, material management plan and a local agreement. This is something that I had a lot of, uh.
Yeah, and last month I was like, what? I was thrown by, uh, you guys bringing up Tracy, which I found out was, um, Ryan actually got ahold of her to get ahold of you guys. It was not just some random person. Well, I knew it wasn't like a random person, but I didn't understand, I thought that you guys were. Getting information about being on our own, not part of the local agreement, and she was there to help Ryan. Give you more information.
Yeah, we wanted information.
I was very thrown.
Um, I did, out of this whole thing, I did like the idea though that we are not locked in.
Right.
We have the ability to say what's best for our county and not get forced by Marquette or anything else. We can deny that and they have to bring it back to the table.
Yeah, one, once the, the wreck, cause you, you didn't even see it, the Zoom call, once. That, that whole part one fifteen, even once in this three-year planning period, once this big committee comes up with the plan. It has to come back to every colony, we're the approval authority for the colony, if the county board rejects it. Then it has to go back for rework, and then even after we accept it, the majority of the townships under us. And there are the other men that's about is townships in the city, the majority of them.
Honestly, I don't think you know anywhere having be that many votes, and everybody be okay with same thing. And it's six. Six counties, how many townships? I don't know what.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what.
So. But that's their problem. S Q pads has to try to come up with an idea that's gonna.
Yeah, right, cause one way or the other, we have to come up with a plan, no matter which way it goes.
As we can get out of it.
Right, every six months.
Can we take a vote, cause?
We'll call, or we need a motion.
Uh, move to approve the. Their local agreement?
Yes.
Second. We'll call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes, I'm hesitant to say, uh. Five years, I don't want to see that either, but yes. It's. As long as we can get out.
Yes.
Okay, that brings it down to nineteen thousand saving revenue ideas, anybody angry? Make some money for the colony, save some money for the colony. Is there any unfinished business? None, financial matters.
No appropriations.
We don't afford bills.
Yes.
My actual reports of all funds. Consensus? And authorized treasurers transfer funds out to the general fund, should be on the seat. Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions.
On the actual resolution for it.
You wanna board on that also? A for the inner local agreement. Got a motion on that?
So moved.
We'll call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes. Resolution B. Adopted the ultra-conic five-year recreation plan. And we've been working on that for, seems like five years. Any questions on that? Please know again, make you got any questions on that?
No.
No, do we, uh, go on, or is this?
A move to approve the resolution adopting the ultra-conic five-year recreation plan, finally.
No, it's for you. We'll call.
Commissioner Caprosa? Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes. Happy to see that one finally. The committee reports. Oh, they've been, all the, uh, questions have been answered on my. Community and that was the whole city. And, uh, the facilities. Like, really nice.
Little more on the airport, I've said it before, but especially since we've got some people that might not know, on July thirteenth. We had Young Eagle flights last year for, you know, for the children free of charge, we're gonna have that again on the thirteenth. Also going to have, we're gonna, we dubbed it the first annual handling field day. Uh, also gonna have some of the pilots from the RAF and the recreational aviation foundation. Are gonna be here to do some demonstrations of short field takeoff and landings. And just to have more planes on display for the kids to look at. Uh, just found out, we've got a, a local lady who flies helicopters, who's gonna bring one of those for a static display as well for them. The taco truck will be up there. I told him, I said, I'm not sure on the wisdom of that, you might wanna talk to the pilots, you might wanna get them to. The kids have been on their plane, yeah, I'll get in the plane before you let them have tacos, but. Yeah, so that's moving ahead, they've got a few other things that a couple of guys are trying to work on. Ryan Graves has been a huge asset up there.
What day is that?
Saturday, July thirteenth.
There you go.
You know, we had, I think we had six pilots last year, we're flying kids, I think we're already up. You know, we had, I think we had six pilots last year that were flying kids, I think we're already up. To double that number that are coming just to provide flights, not counting the ones that are just coming to be here for the weekend. We've got several groups that are coming for Friday, Saturday, and possibly Sunday night event. Just to be here and it's all. Excited to see we had over Memorial Day weekend. There were on Friday night. There were seven planes on the ground overnight. Uh, there was a family, a couple and their three small children on Saturday night that stayed in town at a motel. Uh, and then there were two more planes on Sunday that came in for the day, so. There's been years in the recent past where we haven't had that many planes in the year. So it's exciting to see everybody's hard work and dedication paying off, uh. Some of the pilots, I wanna give some credit to the community visitors bureau. They helped. Fund the purchase and acquisition of. The courtesy car that's up there. That has been a huge. The pilots that have already come in and used it are just. Crazy excited, they can't believe that. You know, this little airport provided that news for them, so, so they're, they're able to come into town and they're able to. If they wanna take the tours, if they wanna eat in the restaurants, or they wanna go to the gift shops, you know. It's been. Already been working out really well for them, so. Thank you, everybody, for their hard work.
Thank you.
When does the, when does the airport open?
Technically, the airport never closed this year.
Oh, is that right?
It was. Closed unless you were a ski-equipped plane when there was snow on the field. So if there was snow on the field, you had to have skis to land on it. If there was no snow on the field. We're all, oh, guess so, and. We're probably gonna try and continue that way, they put out some. We're gonna get some better snow markers hopefully, and maybe as obviously, we didn't have a whole lot of snow, so. We never, we never did try it this year, so, but there had been some interest expressed. Uh, it costs us no extra money from like our insurance carrier, our policy is for three hundred and sixty-five days regardless if we're open or closed, so. Yeah, it was a.
So you don't have to close like they used to.
No. We, we used to, we used to actually close because. We're not falling snow on our grass running.
Yeah.
And so you had to be closed to other than, but now we can stay open. The, uh, MDOT inspectors, the one that actually told us, yeah, you can do that, we're just, he saw, change your wording so that it says.
You have to.
Open for ski-equipped planes on field, it's all covered. So.
If you have any comments?
No.
I'd love to be bored. I should say. Any correspondence?
You have from the Musin Day Trail Network, with a sponsorship notice. Pathways has their twenty-three, twenty-four program planning guidelines. The state tax commission submitted the final state equalization report for twenty twenty-four. And that title for the C R P grant amendment. And Rock River submitted their master plan proposals amendments. All are in the back.
How much?
Yeah, the question. For the D N R. Who controls the power? For that easement. Conservation.
It's a legal, it's a legal binding document, and so. There's, we brought it to the attorney general's office to ask for their review, um, and actually you guys, like somebody looked at it.
Uh, federal services.
Yeah, and, um. So the issue is not only the easement, but also the land ownership, so we don't, we don't have land there. And we reached out to the landowners that have legal access. And the terrain is not great, even if we. Had it, so you have to essentially build several bridges. If you're not gonna be coexisting on the bridges there. Did I say that right? Feel free to.
Yeah, conservation, conservation easement is basically an agreement between the V N R and the landowners at the time, which I believe was. Hartwood.
Hartwood Forest.
Yeah, so then, then it continued forward today. Until manual life, and so it's, it's, it's an agreement that we had on the property. And unfortunately, it allows and doesn't allow everything, and the idea of it at the time was good that it. It, the idea was that it would maintain the trails. Nobody, that trail would be there forever. And so, uh, problem is, it doesn't allow us to move trails, so.
And I think it's important that it's manually if it's not, it's not their fault, it's just that if the road commission is gonna say that we can't exist where we've existed for thirty years. That we have to find another route, which we thought we probably could, wouldn't be that hard, we could work with landowners, we could work with others. But if the landowners are all saying that that's not gonna work, and it doesn't work legally within the easement language. Then if we can't coexist on the bridge and we don't have a reroute. We don't have a trail.
That legal easement or that language that follows that property that they sold it?
Those are the layers.
And, but we're not, like we said, we're not giving up, I mean, if there's an opportunity, we've. It's not for lack of trying, I mean, there was some comments made, you know, and I think the last thing that we should do is be pointing fingers at, at, you know, we have to try to figure out, there's a way to solve it, but. You know, it's. Everybody's worked really hard to try to find a reroute, but if, if we don't have permission from the road commission to state where we've been, and we don't have a new route.
I'm, I'm gonna take my shot, my chance, I shouldn't say not shot, I'm not, I'm not taking a shot at it, cause actually I'm not, I'm not. And I think this is more where Rick was trying to get to too. Is. Who can change the easement? What can be done can be undone. Who can undo it to make it easier to move this trail within the easement, it's already in?
So even if you have the easement changed, let's just say in Magic Wand, we got the easement changed somehow legally going back to the company, we do a revision, we, it passes the attorney general's office, everything's great, wow. We still have to get wetland permits, we still have to, it's gonna be.
My question is who?
Million dollars to, to build bridges, so.
I, I do understand that, I'm. My question is, who? Has the power to change it?
Well, the attorney general has said that. It's not a viable solution, but I mean, and we could go to the company again, I don't know.
I, I'm not asking.
Maybe.
I'm not asking you to. That, that's it. Who can actually say, you know, because I understand the company, it's too complicated that way.
Who owns it?
Who, and I don't even, who owns it, somebody. Somebody had the power to put the easement in place, somebody has the power to remove these.
Right, so the way they've described it to us is you have sticks, bundles in a, in a, in a real estate agreement, and we can sell rights to property. And this bundle, this conservation easement, as they're saying, has been sold. It's sold in perpetuity.
Okay, I'm just looking for who we can put pressure on, not, that's not in this room in Lansing to. You know, I'm not, I'll just say it, you know, I'm getting a little tired of Lansing thinking with us.
But it isn't Lansing.
It comes back around, your, where's your head office?
Yeah.
It's politicians in Lansing that could fix this. That need to get involved and get this fixed for us. It's not, not just you guys, I'm not saying, I know, cause you've got limited funds, you've got limited, this is one of those. This is one of those DJ Jacobetti situations. Where. Probably the, it needs to be put onto the powers that could actually. Either find the funding or make it easier for the trail to be moved where it already is. You know. I'm not trying to harangue you guys physically here, you know.
It's private land, though, it's private, it's private land.
If it wasn't so complicated, the company may be willing then to work with us. But they're already locked up in. Political mumbo jumbo that. You know. And it's not using my soapbox, but. You know, a lot of decisions get made. In Lansing for us. We're not downstate, where it's a whole different. It's a whole different world, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not, this isn't against you guys, I'm just. Was looking to see if there's someplace we can. Get on our politicians to. Put the pressure to get this done for us. That's up to him, if you get to.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Wait my second.
Yeah.
Get through here. Uh, thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks for coming, I know it's a hot seat and you're not happy to be here.
It's not our decision, right?
Right, and, you know. And that's all, this is here to try to find out. What is the right answer, so people know what is out there and not spreading stuff that's not, you know, to try to get it out there where we're sitting on this situation. Um, I think everybody is showing up. It's hopefully, we get somewhere with it. Right or wrong, we gotta find out and move forward, but. Mickey. That. Any comments?
Well, I do, um. I got a magazine here from Mac.
Yep.
And, uh. The governor, governor intends on taking seven hundred thousand. Of farm acres in northern Michigan. And put. Solar panels. It's land produces on, right, three hundred bushel of acre corn.
And it's put that conservatives thing, so they can't know it.
Yeah, they won't do it there, but. I'm thinking the travesty, but. They're here. And they're there.
Always, yeah. That comments? Pam?
I must want to say, once again, I think I already said it, that we will, our land bank was able to get on the Spartan thousand for stabilization of the old fire hall. And we've been trying to. Get it done. But we got the bid in Friday, and we're gonna go over them on Wednesday. This coming up with a couple days, and we're going to decide, um, who gets the bid for that, and we should be seeing that old fire hall. Looking a lot better and pretty in your future now. So, and then also, um, our land bank also was able to get some grant money for five other projects. And one of the ones, one of the biggest ones that's been on Eldred County's minds was the Tioga. And I think I, I had to pull it from the last grant, cause we couldn't get the cleared title, but. I think now we're, um, they approved it, so we should be able to clean up the title, so. They have a lot of projects going on. That's it.
Pam? Read public comments.
Me, me, always got comments, people, um, is there a way for the county board to pass a, some kind of a resolution supporting? Moving the trail and will that move anything with, say, like Ed McBroom, Jen Hill, to try to have some kind of a discussion in Lansing? Because again. You know, I feel like we're. You know. We're not making any progress, and again, I want to emphasize that you're hurting all the small businesses here, and don't think all these bars and restaurants. That surround this town are gonna be open for many years without snowmobiles, they will go out of business.
I'd say this, anybody can write a resolution and submit it to the county, and it'll come onto this board and make a decision if yes or no.
Okay. Hit him, okay.
In the back. My name is Don Reed. I'm the, um. Same president for the Eastern Upper Pinnons and Motorized Trails Association, which covers from. Munacy. Schoolcraft County, thirty drumming. Two thousand eight, when this, um, nature conservancy easement. Was handed to, um, Hartwood Forest for nine hundred thousand dollars. At that point, I was sitting in. The Association for Snowmobiling and the state. We identified that, say, hey, this is gonna bite us in the ass at some point, sixteen years later, sixteen years later, here we are, it's by the CS, I have solution. There's a solution. One would be, we're worried about logging trucks coming down through that area in the winter time. So, let's take, if there's logging trucks coming from the east, let's take them. To H fifteen. Run them down H fifteen, and then they can run twenty-eight, that way it'll alleviate some. Issues with logging trucks, because we all know that. Point, I say nine, it's point eight miles, whatever it is, would solve that issue for that. We also can slow down the traffic during the winter time, and that segment. Would cause, would cause, um. Car snowmobiles, which I don't think we've had any, anything in, in that region, which, which is great, but that would alleviate some of the traffic issues, because we all know, we are not going to go on. That heart, old Hartwood forest land and put trail in that. So, it's not gonna happen. So, we all, we know that. The state's not gonna come, the state's not gonna come out and say, all right, hey, this is working, we have to redo this, we have to rethink this, it's not gonna happen, because. They were given nine hundred thousand dollars, and there's nas of concerns that easement in there, end of story. So, if that's the case, let's take this and look at it in reality and say, okay. If we're worried about logging trucks, this will eliminate the logging trucks for one December. To one April. In that section. So be it, it's not, it's not a big deal, I'm not taking the loggers, my family's a logger. They all understand, it's not that much difference over. Around that area, and then drop the speed limit in there, because we all know who could happen to slash, oh, snow. And this continues on. Snowmobiles, they don't come here. What's gonna happen to small business? I owned for twenty years. I counted it on a hundred and ten day minutes, oh really, it was huge. And I was a small business. So. There is a solution. If the county road commission would come to the plate. And let's chat about this. There's ways of getting around this. We can't use the property, we're not going to use it. What do we want to do, eliminate that tourist? Segment? We can't free that. And I know because Ceni groomed that area. For a year, we left Ceni and we groomed throughout the writers castle, so I know what it's like to groom in that area, and I was saying, if we, if we're worried about safety, logging trucks, vehicles, slow the vehicles down. And remove the logging trucks out of there. It's not that, it's not that hard. Thank you. Have a great day.
My name's Karen Minder, I'm the executive director of the Michigan Snowmobile O R B Association, we're the advocate for the snowmobile, snowmobile users and O R Beers. Um, I've listened to all you talk about your budgets and, and the money and, and your bed tax and things that pay for your county. Snowmobiles pay lots of money. Every one of them that come to your town are staying in your hotels, they're eating in your restaurants, they're buying your fuel. Nobody spends more money than when they're on vacation, and every time they jump on their sled, they're on vacation. They buy a fifty-two dollar permit just to ride their snowmobiles. These guys are dedicated. They're, they're. Creatures of heaven, and every weekend that they can go, they go to the same areas. Without this trail in here. It's going to be black eye. And so I would just urge you to work with your road commission, just like Don just said, we can raise stuff, move it, move it around, get this through there. And keep the money coming into your town. We don't think they're backup. No, they get the first snow. They have the most snow. Everybody heads to munacing. We, we, we don't want to lose this trail, it's a national park. Michigan relies on recreation in our state. As we lose our manufacturing, it's all your mom and pop stores. Those, those locations are what keeps our state alive, and snowmobiling is one of the uses to keep that state alive. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments up there? Any other comments?
Um, I have one more question, um. Just a question, um, the sheriff's department, I spoke to Steve Blank repeatedly regarding this, and he stated that there has never been a. Accident and that the sheriff's department does not have safety concerns with that section of road, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, we want that on record, cause there is no safety concern from the sheriff's department stance, thank you.
Same.
Again. We don't want issues. With accidents there, so if we take a look and, and do a few things, let's go to speak down, move the logging trucks just from one April to. Or one December, one April, that would solve some issue there too, cause we're all worried about logging trucks, snow dust on the yards, so, is there any of the? Road commission here tonight?
They were.
They were, they were.
Pete's here, Pete's here.
He's back there. That whole dog was there, oh, thank you.
Again, I'm food for blood. We know we, we have an issue. We have some. We can take care of some of this. Have a really good day. Thank you.
Just listening to everybody, and, um. Now one question is, why don't you have scheduled? Time when you know that the loggers are gonna go that room that time, and have either someone from the park or a police officer there to be the stop snowmobile traffic, or anything, you can control. When a logger is gonna go through. But they're only gonna go through, it's only gonna go, it's gonna go through during daylight. And those are working out, you know, when it comes to the winter, so if you have. Someone, you know that how long it's gonna go through in such and such a time, you can have. Police or, they walk there. If you can't figure anything out. Office will like you.
Yeah.
I just got one thing you said, you only got point eight miles on the road. You're gonna get someone from Blackmore.
You're gonna get someone from Blackmore, it's gonna go down Congress, so. You're gonna go up, they'll get a car, you're gonna have a lot more people, kids, lot closer, that are, remember that.
Indian Town Road.
Indian Town Road, and then you got all these roads, so you got a lot more houses, you're gonna get a lot more headaches than the point eight that you guys are readable. Just a food thought, I mean, I've lived all that way all my life, so I mean.
I guess I should clarify, safety is a concern, but it's never been an issue with. The biggest issue we see in law enforcement standpoint is snow machines coming out going against the flow of traffic.
Right.
Because they try and stay on one side, you know, more signage could alleviate that. We've never had an increase in accidents or anything due to the snowmobiles being on the road.
I have one thing real quick, you just brought up a really good point, and we've talked about this, and I wanna make sure that's clear, if it does close. The signage goes away and the grooming goes away, and that is also a concern, right, because then now. And they, we did that, but now where, where do they go? And.
And does that create more of a hazard?
Like you're saying, how do you control, what is, yeah, so, that's just something else that is important to know.
Yeah, I think some unique signing there could be done, you know, we have, um. We could create some signs, so maybe that's an option.
With everything that's been heard and said here, is there any wiggle room or any judging that the road commission was going to do? Can we all get together and maybe have another meeting?
We'd like to. Like with the D N R trying to find a trail, we'd like to try to, you know, help all.
Knowing that there is no reroute right now, would there?
Right, right now, I get calls all the time, because the way the road is right now, it's tore up. You got your public local running on this roads, and they gotta run on this all summer, cause it's been tore out in the last couple of years. And we've had to afford to keep up with it, you know, we don't get any help on it.
But I thought the D N R has agreed to put in the hardened pavement, which would be a, you know. It's a return on your investment.
Yeah, um. Public comment only on this, just to clarify, this Eldred County Board. The road commission has the authority on that road, we just bring it together trying to get. The right people in the right spot, hopefully to try to get somewhere with it, um, so everybody has some knowledge. And the, the right information out there, that is not on Facebook of this or that or pointing fingers. So. But there, the next road commission board.
It's Monday.
Next Monday, yeah, so, anybody, any more comments?
I just wanna make one more, I wanna state, I don't think the road commission is out to hurt. The, you know, munising tourist community whatsoever, I understand their concerns, but given that there is currently no feasible. Way to move this trail as of right now, right, I'm hoping that there can be a reconsideration, um, cause I don't know what else we're gonna do. And I really, again, these are, these businesses are owned by Eldred County residents, these are not owned by, you know, corporations in New York City. These are local people here, you know, families to raise and employees that live here, who are all counting on us, including me as a hotel owner. To pay them their wages and their tip money, et cetera, et cetera.
What else?
If you wanna add in, uh, so you wanna enter it into the record? Sheriff's comments, sheriff's department comments?
It's on the tape.
Yeah, it'll be on the tape, but if you wanna have minutes, what's, I guess, what you're looking for, of course.
Yeah, I think that, I think it should be, I think that the commentary as well about the economic impact of winter tourism, which is. Over ninety percent snowmobiling, based on our studies, should be entered as well.
Good, I see one more hand way back there.
Yeah, I just, again, like to make sure that my, my comment goes in the, in the record. There is, there is a solution here, I gave a solution, and Reese Riley has, he asked all the time, I have that. And that can be, the D N R already stated that they'll, they'll take care of that, so that's another issue that, it's not gonna cost the road commission anything. And come out of the snowmobile fund to take care of that quite nicely.
Not a lot of that, question should be next week at the road commission meeting, I can, I can tell you one thing on that is. That's already been up for bid, and it's been set, so. To have them change that.
Think with an August eighth start, I was at their last meeting, I believe it was on August eighth.
So, change that would be hard.
We're not talking to change for the whole road stretch, that piece, that's, that's available to do that piece, that's.
Thank you, any last comments? One, two, three.